... conclusions, when may we combine clarity of mind with kindness of heart and maybe be impartial with blending of strong personalities, maybe sacrifice self-interest for the good of the whole, may we do our work with love and clarity of vision for the benefit of those we represent. Please be seated.
Thank you.
So I will call the regular meeting of council to order. And I would ask for Ms. Robertson, are there any light items? I know you brought attention to one today.
Thank you, worship. There is one, and that's item nine point two, which is bylaw three one one eight dash ten. And that's just to be pulled from the agenda so that the adoption of the bylaw can be considered in conjunction with the bylaw three one six five Parks and Public Open Spaces bylaw. There is an amendment proposed tonight, so we'll have both those.
And it requires twenty-four hours.
That's correct.
But for adoption. Okay, thank you. So that's the removal of nine point two on your agenda, if you scratch that off. Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Moved.
Okay, moved, seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. So we move to adoption minutes. We have the May twenty-fourth council minutes, or sorry, the May fifteenth, twenty seventeen council minutes, and a motion to adopt.
Moved.
Thank you, seconded. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We move to the item four two, the May twenty-third special committee of the whole minutes, and a motion for adoption.
Moved.
Thank you, seconded. Okay. Any discussion? There are omissions. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Item four three, which is the June fifteenth, twenty seventeen committee of the whole minutes, and a motion for adoption.
June fifth, worship.
Sorry. Oh, yes, June fifth, sorry. Motion for adoption. Thank you. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we have item four four, which is the June fifth special council minutes, and also motion for adoption. Thank you, seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we move on to delegations, and we have a delegation, and we have Mr. Martin Barker, Dr. Martin Barker, also a former councillor of the city. Welcome back to council chambers as a delegation. And our delegations have ten minutes for presentation, and then there will be a period of time for councillors to ask questions.
Certainly.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, council, for letting me speak tonight, and thank you to those who are coming out to support. As you know, I am Martin Barker. I'm a previous councillor of the city, and I live in Coronation Avenue. And before I start, I would like to just make a quick disclaimer. I have sat as councillor here, and I currently have no intention to reenter politics in any public matter, and I don't intend to criticize any of the councils in the valley. In fact, I'd rather not be giving this presentation, but I feel compelled to do so because of the situation that's evolving in our town. And there's others who may have given this presentation, but were too nervous to do so. Now, I think we can all agree that there is a crisis in our community. And I know it's a crisis that's not necessarily centered in our town, but it's all over the province, and it's growing all over North America, actually. And of course, I think it's especially bad in Duncan. And what I'm talking about, of course, is addiction and the crime associated with addiction. And not only we have people literally dying in this crisis, we have increased homelessness, we have increased crime from increasingly desperate people, and we likely have higher levels of crime because of the increased organized crime that's probably coming into our region. And as I said, I'm not here to criticize. I think the city of Duncan has handled the recent tent city crisis very well. They use great efficiency and very, to me, quite a bit of sympathy and sensitivity to the issue. And I know that the councillors and staff here in this room are well aware of the problem we're having in our city. VHA is operating under their mandate just to help the sick, and that's what they're doing. They're trying to help the sick, the people who are addicted. As a citizen of the city, though, I often feel that there's only one side of that metaphorical coin being considered, and that's the side of the desperate people who are addicted and homeless. We are hearing about safe injection sites, we're hearing about increasing social housing, there's ten thousand needles given out every month to our addicted, and we need, we hear a lot about the need to get to the root of the problem. But I can also tell you that as a citizen, I am feeling the brunt of the addiction issue too, and I'm not speaking for just myself. My office has been robbed, the criminal broke through a sunlight and left their drug paraphernalia on the roof. My truck has been broken into, which was a three hundred dollar deductible. I lost valuable personal property. A bicycle was stolen off my front porch, among many other very regular small thefts. I've had neighbors, their house broken into, their family heirloom stolen. Another neighbor, close by, the house broken into and damaged. I had a friend assaulted recently on a tennis court, who had to receive reconstruction surgery because of the damage done. My niece was recently hit by a rock from a passing vehicle. I had an elderly friend, who was, last summer, was, was quite frail, was pushed to the ground and mugged. You know, the daycare that the city of Duncan sponsors are fundraising to build a fence. The needles that are being left in a daycare playground are a risk to the children. You know, just a few weeks ago, there was a needle stick injury in Duncan Hill Park. You know, local churches used to do their baptisms in the river, and they can no longer do that because of the needles in the river. I heard a story from a friend that I trust, who witnessed a forty-year-old drug addict, whom she assumed to be a male forty-year-old drug addict, teaching a young fifteen-year-old girl how to inject. You know, our kids can't use the parks until the fields have been thoroughly inspected. Businesses around town are paying a high price for the theft and damage of their spaces. Saint Julian Storage has spent tens of thousands of dollars in repairs and fortifications. Because these losses are small and individual, they accumulate, they are not covered by insurance costs. Many business and homeowners are building bigger fences, cutting back their shrubs, and installing security. I myself now have security cameras at my house. Many in our town are fortifying. This is not a comprehensive list of what's happening in our town, this is pretty much just my experiences, and the experience of a few people around me. These stories are being repeated many times over in our community. Pretty much every week, there is some trauma reported in our newspaper. Last week, it was a murder at Galavista Apartments. This weekend, it was an attempted stabbing in Cairnsmore. And I'm worried about our town, and not just the crime. I personally believe me and our town are beginning to crack. I know many people who now have baseball bats by their door, and they have every intention of using them if somebody comes onto their property. After the false accusation last week of a sexual assault on your street, if any of you followed the online social media, it was just crazy. There was calls to burn down the homeless shelter. There was much more disparaging remarks than that. You know, in fact, the Sons of Odin are trying to organize in Duncan, and for those who don't know what the Sons of Odin are, they're an out-and-out vigilante group. You know, there are two Facebook pages that have just recently come into existence, Concerned Citizens of Couchin and Stand Up Couchin. In just a few weeks, they got three thousand, nearly three thousand followers. Just yesterday, I discovered another online Facebook page called Steel Duncan, and it just, what appears to be a couple months, they have seventeen hundred followers, and they just talk about the things that are stolen on their property. All this tells me that the people need help, and that there's a real crisis in our town. There's a lot of talk of harm reduction, and everyday citizens need some of that harm reduction as well. You know, I have chosen to come to the Duncan Council because I believe this is a group of progressive, action-oriented leaders. I am hoping that you all have a recognition that there is a problem, and that problem is not just one-sided, but it is two-sided, that not only do we have addicted and homeless that are in a crisis, but we have a crisis for the everyday people. Protection cannot, in our town, be based on vigilanteism or self-appointed justice, and that's why I'm proposing the creation of a police-oriented task force. I recently heard our police inspector asked for four new police officers to help with their overwhelming caseload. I agree, we need to give some relief to those police officers, but why not have them dedicated to our current crime wave? Perhaps it could be a temporary task force assigned for two years, as I suspect many of the crimes are instigated by a very small portion of the population. I'm also suggesting the addition of a qualified social worker on the task force to help create that atmosphere that we need to help everybody. And I know it's within the city's capacity to instigate this program. I know for the last five years, the city has been collecting close to a million dollars a year for the future anticipated policing costs, as we know, when we reach five thousand, we're going to be on the hook for a lot of police costs. When I sat on council, we debated what to do with that money. What we chose to do was to pay down our debt and to pay for emergency infrastructure, essential infrastructure we needed to do and avoid going into debt. Now, I would hope that after five years, our debts are paid down, and now the money is being spent on just extra infrastructure projects, because I know it hasn't been returned to the taxpayer. But it's always been in the cards that this money had to be returned to taxpayers or put towards the increased policing costs. And now I believe it is time to invest that money in policing. And I hope that Duncan will initiate this plan, willing to go to loan if necessary, but will lobby our neighbors in North Couchin for perhaps for some financial assistance. And I know that North Couchin is discussing the possibility of hiring four new officers, so they may be open to using that money for a task force. I don't know, I haven't talked to them, I just know they're talking about the police officers. You know, perhaps a CBRD could be involved. I would expect that VHA could be persuaded to provide the social workers, and I would hope the provincial government sees the benefit of this program. And you know, there's a lot of entities, if they all contribute, then the cost will be minimized in Duncan, but I believe it's an essential thing that we need to do. As far as I know, under these conditions, this plan has never been attempted. I believe it'd be a real feather in the cap of the people here if they took the leadership and provided a possible solution to both sides of the addiction coin that is happening around our continent. You know, we need a solution that provides not only help to the everyday citizens, but also to our addicted. And currently, in all the planning, I don't see any help for the everyday citizen who's being affected by our crisis. If we look at the successful Nordic model, which was used to reduce prostitution, they used a very focused policing force, and I believe that's what our task force is, it's a focused policing force that will help reduce specific risks in our community. I really believe that everyday citizens need to start feeling safer in our community. They need to know that their products or their possessions will be safe, and that they themselves will be safe. And on a second topic, just briefly, because I'm here, I just want to quickly give some thoughts about the insight that's coming up. And I'm a little worried that VHA may not give the citizens an opportunity to voice our concerns, and it's my understanding that the insight's coming, whether it's supported or not, by the community. I believe, in my experience, that where I've seen insights, the area surrounding those insights become very inner-city-like, and I think that's something that we need to avoid in our community. I am hoping that VHA will guarantee us, when they build this insight, a four-block radius with twenty-four-hour security, that they will provide a one-eight-hundred number to the people in that radius so they can phone if there's problems. I hope that they will assure us there will be increased policing costs, and I hope that they will give us a date, a firm date, when they will close that down, because that's the date they anticipate the crisis to be over. One saying, I would like to thank you all for having the patience to listen to me, I know you used to listen to me lots, but much less nowadays. So that kind of ends my presentation, and I'll be off for the seven o'clock meeting at the United Church with our new MLA, who is also discussing this exact same topic. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, so I'll take questions, if you're okay for questions.
Of course.
Counselor Jackson?
I had a motion, actually.
All right.
I would like to move that council direct staff to provide a report on the options, impacts, and alternatives to the presentation that we've just heard by Martin Barker.
Seconded.
Because we have a motion on the floor, you know the procedure, we'll have to just go through that, but just to hang tough, in case there's other questions from council. So discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just that staff, sorry, I jumped again on that one. Just that staff reach out to North Couchin, because I was at a meeting the other day, and this discussed that North Couchin is looking with, Carolyn Rolls is there as well, at a CAR sixty-type format, so it was at a public open meeting, so I'm assuming it's in discussions. So to touch in with those organizations and find out what it is that they're doing in a CAR sixty model, I'm sure you know about that, Dr. Barker, it's a wraparound, so there's a, there's always a nurse with an officer, they do it in Prince George, it's been very successful, and so there was discussion that that's being looked into and considered in the community, and it may not have been North Couchin, they just may have been at the meeting, it could have been through somewhere else, but Carolyn Rolls would be a good person to check in with about that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd just like, obviously, I seconded the motion, so I'm in favor of it, but I'd like to thank you for coming and like opening our eyes a little bit, or everybody's eyes, and I'm probably going to speak out of turn, but I fully endorse your consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, and just, just a comment, I, you know, I've been involved in quite a bit of work with different groups which are organizing to try to address the community issues with great concern, and, and so I do, again, I thank you for coming and acknowledge the, the issues, there's no question that we, that there is, are, you know, significantly complex issues to deal with here, and we're not alone in it, so we have lots of communities to look to, to, to look for ways that they've been successful, so that's very valuable. I did have a brief discussion with Inspector Carfentan today and last week with respect to the suspicious death at Galavista, which is under investigation, and there are, and we would hope, through our staff reports, received some options with respect to how the RCMP could be resourced to their needs, and so I'm in direct consultation with the RCMP on that, as North Couchin as well, so, so thank you for that, and, you know, we'll look to ways we can try to address some of the issues. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Barker?
Just thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, so we have another delegation section on the agenda tonight, and it is regarding our twenty sixteen annual report, and I'm just wondering if there's any people in the audience tonight who would like to comment on the twenty sixteen part, not you, Mr. Hatton, you're not going to comment on twenty sixteen annual report?
I haven't read it, so.
Okay. It is posted online, so if you'd like to look it over.
I haven't read it, but I'm pleased to have you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming, Counselor Benson, from North Couchin.
I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we move on to report of the Chief Administrative Officer, so Mr. Vertai. I'd just like to hit the highlights of your report.
Thank you, your worship, just to touch on a few, the Canada Avenue Utility Undergrounding Project is progressing well, contract to complete prior to the beginning of the Summer Festival's thirty-nine days of July. The Duncan Street Boulevard improvements just got underway today. Parking will be a challenge for this week, and I believe it's intended to complete this week, or if not, early next week, and the east side of the Canada Ave parking lot is closed during this work, so that's why parking in, in the area will be a challenge for, for the week in particular. The twenty seventeen water system capital projects are now out for tender, except for Sane Road. Sane Road has been delayed as North Couchin decided to replace the sanitary sewer at the same time, and so we're now attempting to do a joint project with North Couchin on Sane Road. The draft zoning bylaw, the public open houses have been completed last month, May, and we're now, staffers now going through the public feedback and making amendments prior to bringing the draft bylaw for council's consideration at the July Committee of the Whole Meeting. Lastly, just wanted to note that tax due date is fast approaching, July fourth. People are encouraged to pay through their bank or dropped off a postdated cheque at City Hall well prior to the due date. Please also remember your homeowner grants, which will need to be claimed either online or through the, at the city's website, or at City Hall prior to that same due date of July fourth. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So we move on to reports of staff, and we've got the city of Duncan, Duncan twenty sixteen annual report, and a motion that council received, the city of Dunk twenty sixteen annual report as presented. Moved, seconded? Seconded. Any discussion on that?
It's great.
It's, it's a very good-looking document, yeah, yeah, very easy for the public to, to look at. Okay, I'll call the question in, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we move to item seven point two, which is an appointment of the auditors for twenty seventeen, seventeen and twenty eighteen, and a motion that council appoint NPLLP to the city's auditor for twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. So a motion, thank you. Seconded, thank you. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Oh, Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship, yeah, I just wanted to note that there's a slight increase, five hundred dollars per year for the next year's in the report here, so it's not, not a huge increase, but there is an increase for the services, but it looks reasonable.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven two, this is with respect to beer garden permit, and the council approved Kid Sport Couchin's application for a beer garden permit to hold a Couchin On Tap Beer Festival in the city square on July second between one PM and six PM, subject to receipt of a copy of the special occasion license signed by the RCMP. Is there a mover?
Moved.
Moved, seconded, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. So we move on to reports of committees, so we have the Tourism Committee recommendations, and I believe we've got the chair here for tourism. Hmm? That would be you, so, Counselor Duncan, if you would bring those two recommendations forward.
Eight point one point one, totem refurbishment signs, that it is moved that the totem subcommittee design and manufacture a sign to explain totem pole refurbishment, with up to two hundred dollars to come from the totem subcommittee budget reserves. On behalf of that committee.
Okay, so is there a mover?
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Any discussion on this? I have a question, what's, this would be a single sign, I, I take so, with, has a location been determined for it?
I'd refer you to Counselor Horton, because he's on that subcommittee.
Yeah, it's when the, when the pole is removed, the sign will be put there.
Oh, it would be, it was removed around each project, just?
No, this, this is a refurbishing of a, of a pole, when it's taken down and, and refurbished and taken away, because it's probably gone for a couple of months to get, to get, to get refurbished.
But each time a pole is done, that sign will?
The sign will be there, yeah, to explain why there's a hole in the ground, basically.
Great, yeah, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Eight point one point two, totem interpretive sign project, that council approved the allocation of up to an additional hundred and fifty dollars towards the totem interpretive sign project to come from totem subcommittee budget reserves, on behalf of the committee, has a move.
Okay, seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we move to the June fifth, twenty seventeen committee of the whole recommendations, and there's a number of recommendations there, and Counselor Horton, I believe you are the chair of that committee, if you bring those recommendations forward.
I think so. Eight point two one, appointing council members to a joint amalgamation information working group. The council appoint two council members to a joint amalgamation information working group for the purpose of making recommendations to both councils on a process for developing sufficient information for a binding referendum question on amalgamation. Note, municipality of North Couchin has appointed councillors Elsiebring and Maeve McGuire as representatives for North Couchin.
Okay, so the motion with respect to this council is the first portion, the other's just a note to us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, so moved and seconded, any discussion on that?
We haven't, we haven't appointed anybody.
Well, this, this says, we haven't done that, it's just saying that we do appoint two councillors, so we can make a separate emotion, a motion if we have volunteers or recommendation, okay? So at this point, we'll just pass this motion as it's worded.
I would just pass the motion to recommend who the two members would be, because you previously already established that you were going to do a joint working group, so just, it's just to appoint, it's just, I think it would be fair.
Yeah, okay, so that, but this is the recommendation from the committee of the whole meeting, so this was the motion passed.
Okay, now, can I make a suggestion, then, that we?
Just let, let's just get sorted on the procedure here, so we get, get it right, and...
This is just a, this is just one that I had massaged, get the intent forward from the committee of the whole, so my mistake in not just being the blanks there to fill in the names, so it was the intent that the decision be made at this, who those two people were. So that's not specifically...
So let's just, so we just put the council appoint, and we put a, scratch out two council members, and we're just going to put in, appoint two names, okay?
Okay.
Does that make sense? Does everybody understand where we're, so we're, we're scratching out in the motion on your agenda, the council members, and we're putting in two names, okay, so...
So can I, do I amend the motion now, or just put the names in?
It's, it's, no, we're amending it.
I'm going to suggest that we continue with two councillors that we've had through this whole process.
And one is not here tonight, so they may or may not be amendable, but we can always change if they're not later.
She has made me aware that she would love to continue on. Counselor Bell?
Okay. All right, so that would be councillor's statement, that we appoint councillor Staples and Bell?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's seconded.
I'll second.
Okay. We've already seconded, it's been moved and seconded.
Do I call the question?
No, I, I do that.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, you're just introducing the motions, and thank you very much, Counselor Horton.
Taken away, my glory.
Okay, so with that motion forward, moved and seconded, any further discussion on those appointments? If not, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion's carried. Okay, Mr. Counselor Horton, eight point two two.
I'm still working.
Where are we, eight point two two, alternative fuel considerations, the council approve utili, you, you, hang on, you, you...
Utilizing.
Thank you very much, utilizing the Couchin Biodiesel Cooperative to provide a twenty percent biodiesel blended fuel for the city of Duncan Solid Waste Truck.
That's been moved, seconded, thank you. Any discussion on this? Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Couchin Biodiesel's been around for quite a while, but we really have to start pushing it more, and I think this is a great step, we're actually walking the top, as they say. So the sooner we get more of our vehicles able to use this biodiesel blend, the better. And it does show that, you know, you, you can talk about climate change, but you actually have to do something about it, so it's a great first step for the city.
Okay, any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Item eight three two three, Counselor Horton?
Yep, eight point two three, Statement of Financial Information, the council receive and approve the two thousand and sixteen Statement of Financial Information as attached to the June fifth, two thousand and seventeen report by the Director of Finance.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Eight point two four, UBCM and AVIC Conference Policy, the council approved the amended conferences, AVIC and UBCM policy as attached to the June fifth, two thousand and seventeen report by the Director of Finance.
Seconded. Seconded, okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we move to bylaws, we have item nine one, which is bylaw three one six five Parks and Public Open Spaces bylaw, that council rescind third reading of the Parks and Open, and Public Open Spaces bylaw, and that council reread third reading of the public and, or, sorry, public and parks, open spaces, yeah, parks and public spaces, open bylaws, right, a little spelling error there. Number three one six five, twenty seventeen, as amended, as attached to the June nineteenth report of the Director of Corporate Services.
Seconded.
Mover, yeah, thanks, seconded, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Yes, thank you. Can this be sort of explained a little bit?
Sure.
Through you, Ms. Robertson?
Ms. Robertson? Thank you, your worship. Since the first three readings of the amended bylaw, there was a recent court case decision that was handed down where the city of Vancouver was seeking an injunction, a short-order injunction for a city that was put on a vacant parcel of land, and although the parcel of land was actually earmarked for social housing, the judge dismissed, or at least denied, the injunction at this point, stating that there was no sense of urgency. injunction at this point, stating that there was no sense of urgency based on the length of time that the individuals had set up. So basically, our, our lawyer had recommended that we should expand our definition under park to include a vacant lot, so that not only recreating pieces of property are included, but also city pieces of property, because I don't believe it was the intent to have potential cities on vacant lot, but this is just to expand the definition, and also just a, a couple of extra wording changes, for example, a homeless person, the lawyer recommended to delete the section that said, and no predictable residence to return to on a day basis, as it was redundant to the intent of the wording there, was person with no fixed address. And I believe that's it, so it's just a minor amendment, but could be a fairly significant, significant one, if not included.
Thank you.
It just, it's important procedurally, so that we make sure this bylaw's ironclad when we, when we're using it, so, so we're re-adopt, we're rereading, third reading with those amendments, and we have to have 24 hours between, which is why we're not doing the next adoption bylaw, it has to be a clear 24 hours between it. And I believe we could probably deal with that at our July 4th, have a special council meeting at that meeting to take file adoption. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question in, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And we have correspondence now, which we had correspondence from Ms. Catherine Gagnon, Couch and Valley Museum and Archives, requesting?
Sorry, we've removed 9.2, I beg your pardon.
It's out of the agenda, yes. A letter in support of the museum's application to the New Horizons for Seniors Program for a grant.
So moved.
Okay. So would we need to, I guess that we just approve the letter of support, you'll get the motion down, so moved and seconded, so we know what we're, what we're actually speaking of, any discussion? Hearing, Counselor Horton?
I know I should know, because I'm the, I'm the representative for the, for the museum, but can we get a bit of an explanation on what the letter's for? Probably everybody else knows, except me.
The, the, in the draft letter provided by the museum, they, they refer to it as a, a new washroom project, so what they're doing is converting a couple of washrooms that they have into inaccessible washroom.
Right. I, I was there, I am now, thank you, I didn't know we needed the letter for that.
Okay, so I'll call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move on to reports of councillor and mayor, any councillors that like to report? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and I'll, I have a report, I'll just keep brief. I, I was supposed to attend the May 18th Sobering and Detox Task Force Group, and I was unable to make it on the 18th, and so Ms. Saldara did attend to it, and she did report to us at the committee of the whole with respect to that. I attended an IST Board meeting on the 26th in, in Courtney. I attended along with, I believe, councillor Jackson, the D-Day Ceremony on the 6th of June at the Senate House, and it actually was a really well-done ceremony, and not the attendance, we would hope, but certainly that's dwindling with veterans leaving us and passing away, we, so, but it was a very, very good ceremony, and I enjoyed going to that. On the Sunday, the 11th, I started my BC Economic Development Summit in Victoria, and attended through Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday morning, and it was, it was an excellent summit, there were a lot of really great speakers, I had the pleasure of having breakfast with Jason Hermitage, who was the Vice President of Microsoft Canada, and that was a very good breakfast conversation, he was the keynote speaker in the morning. There was a fellow there, and I can't recall his name at the moment, but he was from the George W. Bush Institute in the US, from Washington DC, and although that name might create jitters in some, it was actually, he was a very, very good keynote talk, and talked about trade, and why North America was still important with respect to NAFTA coming up, there was an excellent presentation on softwood lumber, and, you know, the, the picture going forward, so I think that was very informative. So just for council's sake, I did record most of those presentations. I will admit that I recorded one I wasn't supposed to record, but I did, so you can... Very interesting gentleman as well, and if, the only caveat is that you need to install the OneNote app on, either on your iPad or your phone, so that you can actually get the direct share of it, and it'll give you, and that's Microsoft OneNote. One thing that Mr. Hermitage said is, oh, we run our whole company OneNote, so I thought that was interesting. But there were some interesting things that Mr. Hermitage, that I spoke to him directly about, and it may have, it may have something that we consider with respect to impact if amalgamation were to be considered, that there, it might be useful to consider completely different models for delivering services to people. So that was very interesting, and there were some examples of it in his, in his presentation, so I'll share, if anybody wants them, make sure you have that app, and then I'll share them, because if I share it otherwise, you'll get as a PDF of the page I sent you, and it doesn't actually have a link, so, all right, and then on 15th, on Thursday, I attended another Community Response Network with respect to sobering and detox and, and the opioid crisis, so that, that was a good meeting as well, very well-attended. And we received some information from Island Health, which council has briefed about, and so we go forward from there. Okay, councillor Jackson?
Thank you very much. So as the mayor mentioned, on June the 6th, I attended the D-Day memorial, just noting that it's been, it's a, this is the 73rd anniversary this year since D-Day happened. On the 13th of October, I went to Saitza Watalem, which is the seniors housing across from the tribe's office, to talk with a number of seniors there about their concerns regarding accessibility and the difficulty they, they have in certain parts of Duncan. I was surprised, about 15 people, of course, cannot vote for me, but still, they, they turned up at the meeting, and they had all kinds of ideas, and so I brought them, I brought them a pad of city maps, and they're going to be marking on the maps all the places where they think are problematic, and then I will be listing them all and passing them on to our staff and, and, and the disability committee, I just think it's great, because I, I know, the disability committee is mostly made up of service providers that give service to people who are disabled, they're not disabled themselves, and now we have people who are out there on the street identifying the, these problematic areas, and some of them are, will be very simple fixes, and it's just stuff that, you know, we don't see. So I'm happy to report that. And then on October the, or, October, golly, June the 16th, I attended an open house at Oak Transit, which runs the Handy Dart Service, and saw their dispatch, and then we all got to get on a bus and see how they work. It's, it was very educational, I was very happy that I went. So that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. So we now move on to question period, and I have a question to Mr. D. Vertai, on your report, you indicate that we're beginning to develop agreements with Couch and Tribes for the Indian Road Water Extension, do you know the number of services that would be providing?
I don't, off the top of my head, but I can get that and relate to council, as to how many homes would be listed by that.
Yes, I'm, I think it's a great thing, I think, you know?
It's very similar to the, what we did for the Tressel Road Services, where, where Couch and Tribes and, and the federal government provided funding to extend the city system into that area to provide service to, to folks that?
And Wilson Road as well.
Were trucking water, because their wells were unusable, so.
Yeah. No, okay, great, that's my question, councillor Jackson.
Yeah, thank you. I know we've been talking a lot about affordable housing and homelessness today, but I've been doing some research online, and what some communities are doing are permitting zones where you can have little, little houses, like four and 500 square foot houses, or maybe, I don't know how many people would live in them, but we're currently not zoned for that, so if we, if, if in the future, over the next few months, this becomes apparent that this could be a really good option for the city, what, considering that we're sort of finalizing our new zoning bylaw, is it just a question of opening it all up again and, and revising it, or will that be problematic?
I don't think your microphone's on.
Yeah, it always is, this one to turn off, that's why I have to push. We can certainly talk about that when the bylaw comes forward, that this bylaw is far more flexible than the old bylaw, so it may not exclude micro homes, that sort of?
Tiny homes, they call them.
So tiny, when we say tiny homes, like garden suites kind of thing, there's lots of more liberal abilities within the zoning law for those in, in the new draft. The previous bylaw did already have some secondary suite capabilities, I don't recall that they had specific limitations on size either, so, but we can, if that's in interest of council, we can certainly look at it.
There, there was a maximum, but there was no minimum, I don't believe, yeah. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship, yeah, I think I saw a report on, T. report last week about a guy who had a small house, went to, I can't remember, I think it was down in Sea VRD, Victoria or somewhere, brought it onto the site and told, you, you, you can't put it here. So, well, the, the bottom line, I'm getting at is, like, yeah, we should, if we are going to champion alternate housing, we, we should have the bylaws ready, so, now that poor guy showed up there with his nice new flashy unit, and they told him, get it out of here.
Probably not exact the word they used, but...
It was close, actually, I read the article. So, there's also, and I, and I don't remember where it is either, but I will dig it out and send it to you, send it to council. There was a place, I know it was in Canada, that's just owned lot for tiny homes, and so you can take a city lot and put X number of house, of tiny homes on them as well, or an existing home with a number of tiny lots, depending on lot size, so then they just started doing it, I think in one of them, they're built, they're building like the sixth house on the lots, so I will find that, I just read it last week.
Yeah. Those are things that you could, we could certainly, okay, it takes a fair bit of research, because one of the challenges is with zoning lots like that, you have to service each of those individually, and that's, they can be, they can, you can get around that, but I mean, that's what multi-housing is about too, so.
Yeah, and actually, they did, that was all touched on in the, in the document that I had, it did discuss that, because they, they had different things for different lots, some of them had, had like one shared shower space and different things, so there's a bunch of different ways of doing it, and some of them were individual, but, and some of them, they had to have composting toilets, and so, anyways, they, they'd addressed that, they've done quite a bit of research, and it was Canadian too, I thought was good, because it's...
Counselor Horton? Just, just while we're on the subject, I know you're probably more into social housing and affordable housing than anybody else on this panel here right now, has any, has anybody ever talked to any developers about kicking in, helping what they could do to end this issue? Because I spoke to two developers that basically told me they could cure the problem quite easily in an affordable manner, with affordable housing, because Pacific Homes build prefab homes and send them all over the world, and I mean literally, all over the world, thousand square feet homes ready-built, basically, just put them up, and they're, they're, I want to say they're cheap, but they, they are reasonably priced, nice homes, and a thousand square feet, house a family, or a single individual, or, you know, whatever. But, you know, I, I'm a simple-minded person, but I thought that if somebody was to talk to the developers and talk to either us or North Couch and to donate some land, I think it could probably, well, it's a cure of the problem, but make a dent in the problem quite easily and affordably. So I don't know, anybody's ever?
Can I answer again?
Yeah, please.
So I would say that there's definitely conversations happening around that right now, and it would be a good thing to ask them, contact Couch and Housing Association.
Okay. Great, thank you. So we'll move on then to going into closed session, and so we'll, that the meeting be closed to the public under the following sections of the community charter, Section 91(c) Labor Relations and Other Employee Relations, Section 91(f) Law Enforcement, if the council considers the disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the conduct of an investigation under or enforcement of an enactment, Section 91(g) Litigation or Potential Litigation Affecting Municipalities, and Section 91-j) Information and is prohibited information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under Section 21 of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act.
So moved.
Okay, seconded, okay. All in favor? Opposed? The motion's carried. And motion to rise, I would imagine, with reports? No, that's after.
We're in a response.
Okay, so motion to, and adjourn comes afterwards, right? Correct. Okay, so we're just going to take a little five-minute break, liquid adjustment breaks, and...